So, good morning. It's 9:00 AM on February 20th, and I'd like to call to order the Clickidat County Commissioners' business meeting. We will start, let the record show all three commissioners are present, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Constitution, states and what is under the Constitution, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Do we have an approval of the business agenda or a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented, noting that we have an update from the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport Manager Jeff Bernard at 9:30.
Second.
Taking notes. I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Business agenda passes. Commissioner, meeting minutes as presented. And we have none this week. Okay. So, we are now to that portion of our time for public comment. If you're in the room, please come forward when called and to the front table with your name and address. If online, please identify yourself when called on. We'd like to keep things pertinent to the agenda, and we welcome your comments. Anyone in the room?
You might want to remind everyone not to comment on things that'll be here in front of the board.
So.
I would like to clarify that a little better.
Thank you.
We should not be hearing specific evidence that may be admitted to the board for that hearing, but I believe we can hear for the general public on whether they would like us to hear the case or hearings against their case. That is not a foul. So, I would like to not make it. I would like for when we address the public in what they should or shouldn't be saying to not imply that they can't speak about the case at all. They just can't speak about the specific details of the case. They can speak on whether they would like us to hear the case or hear.
And I believe that's true. We can always take public testimony, but then that comes back to us for our comments afterwards. I think that's where we need to be very careful with commenting on a legal case. That being said, is there anyone in the room that would like to come forward for public comment? And anyone online? Anyone with your hand raised?
7211.
7211?
This Greg Wagner with C.
Good morning.
The county comprehensive plan, county comprehensive plan states to encourage public participation. And that's with regards to events happening in our county. The, uh, the, uh, Title 15, 16, Title 12, all these various issues that are coming up. You go to the county website, whether it's Public Works or the Building Department, and there's, there's nothing on their webpage that gives out any information about a Title 12, 15, 16 revisions, changes. And if you are part of the notification system, you rarely get any notifications about any type of rezonings or code changes or any of that. So, I'd like to know how is the county leadership complying with the comprehensive plan when it doesn't seem to be encouraging public participation? So, I'd like to see that the information's put out there so that it is available for people to view and be able to possibly then comment or give testimony when a hearing comes up. They should be able to have that information well in advance because it does take time to put the effort out to study these issues and come up with good comments or good testimony. So, I'd like to see the leadership here start following the comp plan and make sure that the citizens are encouraged for public participation. So, thanks very much. Bye.
Thank you. Back in the room, anybody like to give a comment this morning? And online, is there someone else this morning? Jean?
Hey, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Good. Okay. I just wanted, just a quick caveat on, on what the gentleman was saying. I believe it was Craig from C's. And I've been doing a little bit of a deep dive in this as far as the notifications on that side of things. And what it seems is like, you know, so something for, you know, say the planning department, it'll go on the planning website, you know, for the, for a rezone or something. It'll also go in the paper, you know, it'll go in the Sentinel. It's, you know, it's digital, you can read it in the paper. And I think where the complication lies is that there is a gap of communication in a world where we are used to getting notified of many things. You know, we get the 911 smart alerts, we do all these, you know, that's kind of what everyone's used to doing. You know, it's, and not to say that there are some complications navigating some of the websites to get the information that we're looking for. So, I don't think that the timeline legally really is in favor of someone who is willing to do the research. It really cuts down the timeline when someone's searching for the initial information, much less the information that they need to come to, for example, the Board of County Commissioners' meeting with the information that they need. So, just a little bit of feedback on the outreach side of things. I'm not sure if that helps, but here it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One more time in the room, possibly? Everybody's visiting today. So, back online, is there somebody else that would like to comment this morning?
2662.
2662.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Tracy from Lyle, one of your normal commenters. And I appreciate Greg's comment and also the next comment on the getting the information out. I too, you know, try to keep up with you guys, but you have so many things, even on your consent agenda, that, that, you know, I might have comments on and boom, they're already accepted. The Title 15, the Title 12, all of those things, you know, that the people in this county know what's going on. And the reason why they're not here to make comments is because what they all tell me is it's already done. Everything on the agenda is already completed or in process to be completed. And that's where I have a problem. So, with your hearings that you have on, on different subjects, you know, we again get the three minutes. Last week, I got my three minutes and lo and behold, after I spoke, the actual owner of Click Network gets on and talks for three minutes. You know, I wasn't able to come back and talk, and that's just not right. That's not, that's not giving me the opportunity to rebut what he said. He said he was a new, a new company that just started this year or in 2023. And I found that he got $100,000 grant way before that. Yes, it was for Hood River and Wasco County, but it was under the name Click, Click Networks. You know, with today, you, you consenting to, uh, the fiber being taken down from White Salmon to Goldendale, I don't know what, what that's gonna mean for the county, but I know that the alerts, the 911 alerts have been out at least for three days, if not longer. That is not on the agenda for today, and I can't understand why. Is it because we have an emergency proclamation in, in place right now? Jeff King said that last week, that he wanted to extend the emergency proclamation made from the weather. Well, it wasn't from the weather. We have weather like that every year. And if our communications, our 911 can't stand up to zero degree temperatures for four or five days, we've got a problem. You know, Jeff King said that the generators were going out. Well, there, there can't be a 911 system that's connected to either land, mobile radios or IP addresses or cell phones because it doesn't, it, it won't work. You can't have an absolute that it's gonna work. You know, your alert system. I, myself and two other people called Unsolved and found that our information was incorrect in the system. We went to Bob Songer and told him, hey, our information is incorrect. The only person that can fix it is the county. You know what Bob said? It's not my department. You know, on, on the commissioner meeting on December 14th, 2021, pages 469 to 476.
Thank you, Tracy.
Communication.
Oh, it's your.
What?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, the, the warning bell went off, but sorry, but thank you for your comments. In the room. So, back online, is there anyone else this morning that would like to comment? Sherry? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. You know, you guys really need to get a town hall and really start having conversations with the people that you, the government are supposed to, what are you supposed to do for us? You're supposed to protect our inalienable rights. And a little bit more civic lessons for you, Mr. Anderson, is the Declaration of Independence and the Articles of Confederation have not been superseded by the Constitution. There still are organic documents in the, and for everybody out there, our Articles of Confederation were written for the people to protect the people's inalienable rights. And then we made a government, the people made a government. And you were to be our servants, and you're supposed to protect us. And all I've seen since my three years of watching this, four or five, since Undercampus, is nothing but harm to the people. Your agenda is always to get done what your corporation wants to get done for whoever you want to get it done with. And no, oh yeah, so my precious three minutes that I'm sure you care about because you want to hear from the people. I'm asking you honorably, Mr. Anderson, Commissioner Anderson, to stop changing what I say. Last week, it's misrepresentation, and it's misleading to the people. Last week, when I commented on Title 15, I said nothing in Title 15 should supersede anything in 18 or 19. And then you went on to, I guess, mock me and say to Jeff Hunter, Jeff, would 15 change 18 and 19? That is not what I said. I said supersede, meaning replace, override, not change. So, stop misrepresenting and misleading the people. I ask you honorably to stop doing that. It's not the first time you've done it because all it does is get your agenda crossed. And also, let me help you fix your SEPA system. It's pretty simple. If you're gonna represent the people, the local inhabitants that these projects, these proposals want to go in, see if I can do this in my precious minute. When you have a pre-submission conference and the departments all get together with that applicant, with the proposal that this applicant brings, it is the responsibility of the county to tell that applicant where their proposal doesn't fit, whether it's zoning, if they're gonna need a cup, whatever, can't get the water, the roads aren't right. That's where you tell the applicant that. And so, the applicant's not gonna start doing all these studies, hopefully wasting their money, knowing they're up against these issues. Secondly, after the pre-submission conference, you should reach out to the public, the local people. We stood up against Undercampus before the SEPA preliminary SEPA determination came out. We don't want to die. You can't evacuate that road. A forest fire starts, it's Paradise, California, and people will die. Listen to the people. Go back to the articles. Be the people's voice. Don't be a corporation. Come back to the republic. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. No one else in the room? And anyone else online? Becky Miles?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, I noticed on your agenda that there's a workshop on the 22nd. I'm wondering if that's open to the public. It's got some couple of points of interest for me. And just wondering if it's open to the public, if it's only in Goldendale, if it's on Zoom. What is the, the program for that?
Thank you, and I'm sure one of the commissioners will respond to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online with their hand up this morning?
Charles.
Charles?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Great.
I want to speak in favor of the commissioners having a hearing on the Snowden Community Council appeal of the zone change application. I think that, I think that this is getting, I guess I'd say that this is supposed to be an administrative appeal where we hear information and try to come to the correct the correct outcome, and it seems like it's being a... Well, I guess I'd, I'd say that it's, it's suddenly everybody's lawyering up and the prosecuting attorneys involved in can hire a lawyer, and we've gotten very legalistic about it rather than just having hearings. It's gotten adversarial, and I don't think that's our fault. I think it's the fault of the process that the board's following of just defending what's already been decided rather than having hearings and getting citizens' input, which both the comprehensive and the SEPA regulations require that you get public input, and yet everything is done to avoid public input. And I think this is just a way of forcing it off into a legalistic thing. Yes, deflecting blame and criticism so that the commissioners don't have to stand behind the decision. They can just talk it up at the hearing. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom this morning? We'll give it one more try. No one in the room has changed their mind, I don't think. One more call for Zoom. So, seeing no one, I'll open the floor to Commissioner's comments if one of you would like to respond. Mr. Christopher? Okay. Okay.
I've got a lot of notes here I'm trying to review too, so give me a minute.
I'll give you a minute. I do, I do have to say for myself, I'll just take the floor for a minute then. There were a lot of comments today about public comment, and that's something that is very important to me and coming into this, my election, that was very important to me. That was a process through different boards I've worked on, that I've always been a champion of citizen review boards, the citizens having their moment. I know that there are really stringent RCW requirements for the processes that we hold public meetings and that we post in the newspapers and we make documents available. I believe in my time here, I'm seeing our directors do that. And I believe they need to and understand they need to adhere to that. I, I trust my directors that they're walking through the processes of what's required of them. And it's a tough job, even like Title 12, it started before I came. And I know we've went through several, several public meetings for comments. And sometimes even for myself, just being here this year, I'll see things pop up and think, how did I not know about that? But then when I go back and look, it has been moving through a public process, and it is open and available to the public to find. And I, I agree, there's a lot of very hard things we're working on, a lot of things that touch people's lives. So, sometimes it's a little bit of a shock when you run across something that might be happening in your neighborhood, and you think that you've been exempted out of the process. But going forward, that is something I will check each time applications come through me to ensure that the public has been involved, and I will fight for that, just like getting Planning Commission back. That was very crucial to me. That is a great public input board, diverse, and lets us know what's out there and what the temperature gauge is from the citizens of this county. So, that is something that I'll keep my finger on and champion for sure for the people. But are one of you, have your comments ready? So, not ready?
I'm still reading through it, but.
Okay. And I guess I could comment for Becky. That is open to the public on Thursday. I believe we start at nine o'clock here in this room on Thursday for workshop, and they are zoomed now. So, you can check in, you can't comment, but you can zoom in and watch what's happening. So, that would be available for you to watch our meeting on Thursday.
I'm sure. We do allow written comment before the meeting, if they want to comment on those.
Do we have a policy for written, taking comment for?
It's spelled out right on the bottom of the agenda that's
Okay.
published every week.
Perfect. And do they have to submit that prior to the meeting? Okay. So, if you see things on the agenda, Becky, you can comment and send it to the clerk of the board, and it'll be included in our packet for your comments for our Thursday workshop then. Good to know.
You wouldn't like me to go first? All right. Sherry, we are working on having a town hall. It'll be in online, and we'll be talking about it hopefully a little bit later today. It'll be a Facebook Live, which you don't have to have Facebook. And so, we are hoping to do that at the beginning of March for an online town hall and see how that goes. So, thank you for bringing it up. I hope you understand I was, I was not trying to speak for you with regards to your comments on Title 15. And when I asked Jeff Hunter, it was for clarification for you. I was not trying in any way to be derogatory. I was trying to get you the answers for which you asked. It, when it comes to public comment, like, a lot has been brought up with regards to SEPA's. The Washington Administrative Code, which we have adopted, the county has adopted those sections, requires that we take public comment, and when we take public comment, and that is included in the Administrative Code, Chapter 19711, I can get you, if anybody would like a more specific part in there. But almost everything we do is written in statute or code or our own local ordinances. We are required to follow those, and that is what we do. With regards to getting the information out in public, I would say that since Commissioner Christopher and I were elected, the Board of County Commissioners has been far more transparent than it ever has been. We have started Zooming meetings. All of our meetings are now recorded. You can go back and see everything that we have done in the last three years. That was never the case before that. And that was something that when, when I ran for election, that's what I heard from, from the constituents that they wanted, and we followed through on that. In terms of getting the notices out, whenever we do an ordinance change, we are required to notify the newspaper. There's WACs and RCWs that require what we do for getting that out there. I am really happy with the Title 12 road standards. It took two years to get us to this, this place. We've had multiple public hearings on it. We have heard from the public. We have had a specialized group that helped work with the departments to, to create those changes. And it's been a long, long thought out and drawn process, and I'm really happy with where the county has been, and I'm really excited for all the good work that our directors do in providing the public notice. And yes, Becky, the workshop on the 22nd will be zoomed, and it will be recorded. And in always, people talk about the three minutes that you get to provide comment. It is ridiculously difficult to provide public comment on something that is technical in nature in three minutes. That's why whenever we have a chance, we leave the record open for written comments, usually after the oral comments have been closed for taking testimony. And that is so that people can get us the information after doing the research so that we can then review it and do our own research if necessary. And with that, I will yield back the rest of my time.
I think, um, we'll start with Mr. Gadway. I, I agree with you, sir, that the county commissioner should be hearing the case and not sending it to a hearings examiner. I don't believe the county has decided yet what they're going to do, but that will be my vote. I'm going to agree with Mr. Anderson that this board has been far more transparent than it has ever been in the past. But I will also add the caveat that it has room to grow, and I will be pushing for that growth and more transparency. Sherry? I absolutely agree with you. On the town halls, I would like to have in-person town halls. I would like to have them in all of the major communities in the county. But I cannot so far get a second vote on that. It looks like we will be attempting a Facebook Live, which at least leaves for concerns for me on my side of the county, where we have a lot of elderly that don't Facebook and don't internet. And not having an in-person resource for them worries me. But if all I can get approval for is a Facebook Live, we'll, we'll give that a try. To the rest of your comments, again, I, I have the same issues. Unfortunately, as I'm hearing you testify, and I'm in my head singing, preach it, girl, because I agree with you and my head's nodding. I'm getting disciplined from the board with a pen. H, don't, don't oppose the board. I have free speech. I can agree with a citizen. It's allowed. I can nod my head in agreement. It's okay. I can disagree with the board. It's not a cardinal sin. So, there's no discipline that needs to be done for me agreeing with Ms. Bosque and for the most part agreeing with Mr. Wagner, even though that goes against the board. I'm sorry. I agree with him. Becky, your question has been answered. Hopefully, now that workshops are zoomed and recorded, they will be a little more open, a little more transparent, and my hope is a little more ethical. With that, that is the end of my comments.
Anything else for you? I think I will leave it at that today. So, moving forward. Consent agenda.
Madam Chair, we have before us the consent agenda with 11 items my motion is to approve.
I have no problems with the 11. I will second.
Motion and a second. All those in, or any discussion?
I just would like to notice for the board that the subject that Tracy was speaking to on the consent agenda is the Astound that is working on the white area network within the Goldendale area. It does not include to the White Salmon area. And that is to create a redundancy. And so, that's actually a, a great thing for, for the county.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda passes? Payroll warrant certification.
Everybody had a chance to look. No issues?
No issues with me.
No issues.
No issues. All right. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $443,085.40, and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $0 for the date ending February 20th, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Payroll warrant certification. Payroll warrant certification, uh, and payment approvals passes. So we are to that portion of our time for a update from our interim planning director, Lori Anderson. Who's here in the room. Thank you, Lori.
Still looking forward to two.
Yeah, the countdown song. You got to start by days now. Say fourteen days.
When is it shipped hours? Is that at the seven day mark or six day mark?
Thank you. Um, so tonight we'll have planning commission. Weather's nice. Well, relatively nice, but definitely a much better than a month ago. And we'll be going over the critical area ordinance as you will know. Um, hopefully we'll get through chapter one. Very exciting. Our newest member, Andy Van Larr, I spoke with him towards the end of last week. We got him all the basic things for tonight. And tonight when we see him in person, he'll be getting a lot more documents and so on and so forth and bringing him up to speed. Um, and then our other new member, Matt Childs. He's actually been on our Board of Adjustment and is pretty familiar with things. Did meet with him two or three weeks ago and he has pretty much everything and should be ready to participate as well tonight. Our request for proposals, we're kind of putting that on hold in two weeks. Our new director will be here and then we'll get back up to speed on that. The Wilson Monroe rezone in the Snowden area, we're awaiting prosecutors, um, review to tell us how to proceed. And obviously that will involve you guys as well. The Rumble Lambert conditional use permit, they're most likely going to withdraw the actual conditional use application and resubmit it after Title 12 is adopted. Their one big hangup right now is they'd have to do a traffic study that'll cost somewhere around four to six to seven thousand dollars. So it'd actually be cheaper for them to withdraw the CUP and resubmit that and meet the what will be the new Title 12 standards. So that's something we have on our radar. And, and I'm sure you guys do too. Port of Clickata with their um, bingeing point shoreline substantial development and conditional use, um, permit that's going to the planning mission most likely in April. We did um, receive three comments, Yap, my Yanti Nation Department of Ecology and Fish and Wildlife. And probably one of the biggest things from these agencies and the nation was we need to update our critical areas and shoreline or or plans. So trust me, we are well aware of that and I'm sure you are too. With SEPA training, you have the workshop on Thursday and I'll be here. In the meantime, Joe Espinoza with um, Central Region of DOE. Um, she's a SEPA coordinator and she's been a great resource and has been helping, you know, running things by me and educating. So that is great. The James Dean Aggregate Resource Overlay, we have really no update on that other than I've been in communication with James Dean. And we'll await further processing once, um, the new director is here. The Smith RV Park, CUP, SEPA binding site plan and stuff. We do have the, the updated documents and plans, but again, that won't be routed right after the new director arrives. And then we have all of our ongoing projects. And that's kind of the, the rundown of the planning department. Oh, one comment, Monday holidays are great. Tuesday, uh, you have a lot going on and then trying to respond to all the emails that came in over the weekend. So we're
You're loaded.
We're trying to be responsive, but there's not enough time in the day sometimes. So.
So kind of been a pileup lately.
Yes.
Between weather and yeah.
Yes. So certainly if you have questions.
A couple, uh, the Rumble Lambert Condition Use Permit, what is that for? Again?
A small doctor's office in the Proud Lake area.
I was gonna say, I know we've heard about it and we've got it updated, but my brain wasn't clicking with what it was. Is there a location on the planning website where somebody can sign up for notifications on all CUP uh, going before the Board of Adjustments? So if you're going to take a specific CUP before the Board of Adjustments, is that noted on the website on what day that is going to be and what project it is?
Well, we post our hearing notices and the Board of Adjustment has a link as well as the Planning Commission to the Planning Department website. So our agendas and the um, hearing notices are out there.
But there's not like an email list they can get for all CUPs going before the BOA?
Not, no. I'm sure working with TS, we could have a way where if people wanted to get those notifications.
Well, I, I'm people.
Right, right.
Cause it's like, I would like to know after recent events, um, where I find out at the end of it all, I get no say in the CUP. Um, it would be nice to be able to at least testify as a civilian uh, to the Board of Adjustments when they're making a determination, but to do that, I need to know when they're making it, making it, having a hearing. Um, so it's for me, it was like, maybe I could sign up on that list. That's why I'm bringing it up. It's not necessarily for the people, even though the people will.
And I put either TS or Civic Plus with our, yeah.
Maybe add that to your list and that because of working order for the new director.
Right.
I believe that would be something he puts on his to do or not do list and how that functions. Because it will cause more staff time and just one more step of something.
Right.
But yeah, but, but, put that down for him to.
So, um, clarification, so we're not killing the idea. We're bringing it up later when we have a new director and have another discussion. I'm fine with that.
Right. And, and I know there's ways to do that.
Yep.
And probably like I said, working with Civic Plus, we could figure that out.
I thought that we have an email list that people join for whenever there's going to be a public hearing on anything. It's routed to the tribes and everyone else and you can sign up for that.
We do have like routing lists and we have so kind of in a vague way, but it would be through us.
Right, but it's for service, college, media, Akamah Nation. It's all those agencies. I'm talking about civilians.
But I thought, I thought you, you can get on it as.
We used to, but it may be something that needs to be resurrected.
And we'll, we'll go back through and update our lists and uh, we'll make.
All right, future discussion.
Yes, yes. Most definitely. And.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori, and I'm counting down the days, not because you've been great, but to give you some help so that maybe we can, I mean, we have, we, me and you have other projects in the works with Golden Dale Parks thing.
Right.
I'm hopeful that when we give you some free time, you can put on one of your nine hundred volunteer hats that you currently wear. And, and we can get that over the finish line.
Perfect.
I think Mr. Anderson has.
Oh, just a um, request. Could you forward me the comments from Yakima Nation DOE and WDFW on the Port of Clickata?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for all you and your staff do.
Thank you and have a great day.
And I think we have Mr. Renard from the Regional Airport here to update us. I think we slid you in at nine thirty, correct?
Yes. Did we have something else scheduled at nine thirty that we moved out or?
No.
Just shuffle people around a little bit. Got it. Okay. I just, I'm seeing later that one of our presentations is sick, so I was curious if there was something else that got sick and you got filled in or how that worked.
Mix ourselves. Well, thanks for coming, sir.
Oh, thank you for squeezing me in. Again, Jeff Renard with the Columbia Regional Airport, uh, got a great big grant project that you guys are familiar with. This is more just a, a quick update and another opportunity that I wanted to share with the board about an idea of, we have our three point four million dollar project going for the taxi lanes in South Apron Rehab, which has led me down the path of trying to figure out how to put revenue generating property and assets on the airport, which are hangers. Um, our T-hanger list is at forty uh, people on it now that desire a place to put their airplane. Connect Oregon, a grant process, a, a transportation grant process in Oregon has a forty-six million dollar pool right now that we are eligible to go after for funding. I've done the legwork to find out it'll, it'll take two point four million dollars to build two ten-unit T-hangers. Each of those hangers would rent, so there'd be twenty, twenty units total. Each of those hangers would rent for four hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars a month. I'm on the conservative side of saying the four hundred a month. Generating about ninety-six thousand dollars in revenue every year for the airport after we get done. The Connect Oregon Grant Process has a thirty percent match. So if we go after two point four million dollars to build these hangers, I have a seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar match. The trying to figure out where to come up with that, knowing that the county has already made statement that there's not a bunch of funds available. The different talks through this, I believe your point oh nine fu- point oh nine funds are eligible for doing hanger is one of their project, one of the projects that's available. Couple different ideas. The city has offered to put a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar loan together if Clickata County could do a hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. And the city would do a hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. The revenue from the loan, uh, couple different ideas, either the city and the county could do a hundred and eighty thousand dollar loan and grant. However, the numbers worked out coming up with the seven hundred and twenty thousand. The grant would pay back quickly, or excuse me, the, the, the loan portion of it would pay back quickly with the rent revenue from the, the hanger rents. We would have this two point four million dollar project paid off inside of five years. With one hundred percent occupancy, which I'm very confident would happen as fast as they were built. So I'm looking to figure, I've got a very short window to apply for this grant. I've got the grant application mostly filled out, needing some wordsmithing. It has to be turned in on the twenty-ninth. Uh, I had spoken with both Lori and Commissioner Dole and Commissioner Anderson in regards to this about the the opportunity to maybe get in front of the, is it KPDA? Let me say that correctly. The, in, in, to request the opportunity to spend KPDA funds. I hope I'm presenting this correctly.
Butchering the acronym big time, but you're okay with that.
Doesn't matter.
KCPT?
KCPT.
KC.
Guys, questions?
Yes, easier for me.
By my math, if you're saying you need seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars and you're going to make ninety-six thousand a year, you have an eight-year ROI. And you're saying you're having paid off in five years. So I'm curious how that math works. Is that only if you get the loan for some and a gift for some? Is that, that's how the five-year math turned out? Is if we give you one eighty and loan you one eighty, then you'd be paid off in five years.
Correct. Yes, three hundred.
If, if we give you the whole thing, that it's an eight-year.
If, if you were to loan us?
If we were to give it to, if we were, if we were to give you seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars or the match, your income, it would take you seven years for us to essentially generate a profit.
Okay.
Um, is, is the eight-year return on investment, we wouldn't see a return on investment for eight years.
Agreed. And that was where some I mean, the airport would be made whole or would be at net zero. The county would be refund, I guess. If we don't do a loan, wouldn't that just, if it, if it's a grant, it's a grant? So where would the being made whole come back to? I guess I'm, I'm.
Um, okay. Where, where I'm saying being made whole is if we're loaning the money and have to get it back, then we have to be made whole. If we're giving the money, um, I guess there wouldn't be an ROI, but then I would question whether we are in plot or from KESAPITA, which I would argue this to KESAPITA, I will probably lose because I lose my arguments in KESAPITA all the time. Uh, but I would be very curious how it fits in our bylaws of building hangers, providing economic development to poor and impoverished areas. Since the people actually parking their plane there are probably not very poor.
But they, but yet they do bring commercial traffic and business to our region and a.
Well, and that's where I would probably lose the argument with KESAPITA.
And I think from a, I guess, looking at it, that everybody has to win in these conversations. The idea of if, if both the city and the county were to come with a hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant and a hundred and eighty thousand dollar loan, it's a win-win. It rebuilds KCP to pool or partially. There's an investment from, from everybody, from the, from the airport, from.
Fair enough. I have no problem with a loan.
Okay. And that, that's where I was trying to come from it. The, the view that I was working, everybody's got to win.
I, I have my interpretation of the bylaws is a little different than other people's interpretations of bylaws. Um, and we have yet to get a legal review of. Uh, but yeah, no, for the record, I have no problem with the grant or, or a loan. I believe the loans are a very valuable tool uh, to agencies to be able to, even if it's a loan for the whole thing. Um, it's a valuable tool that will still be able to get the money refunded back to KESAPITA. Then KESAPITA can use it again for another project. You're getting double the bang for your buck than just giving it away. Um, so, um, at least for me, I would support it. Um, for half of whatever the number is. The grant thing is going to be a little harder for me personally.
Thank you for bringing this uh, in front of us, Jeff. Um, I looked through the, the SEDS list, um, which is what is required to get point oh nine dollars. And the T-hanger project is on our county SEDS list. So, um, barring, um, the prosecuting attorney saying that it is not eligible due to uh, either the bylaws or any other state issues. Um, I don't see a problem with using point oh nine dollars on this project for economic development within the region. Um, including making our airport more self-sufficient so that we can quit spending county reserves on the airport. So I see it as a positive for the county and the community in the long term. Um, the question you have is you, as I'm trying to, to understand it, you have to apply for this grant by the end of the month. You need an answer on whether or not the county will put forward either money or support for that, um, for that, that fifteen percent of the match. Um, I guess my, my thoughts is, um, KESAPITA does not control the point oh nine dollars. KESAPITA is a consulting agency, uh, the Board of County Commissioners controls the point oh nine dollars. Um, I see the point oh nine dollars is the most likely revi- uh, place for this. Um, and I do really like the idea of a fifty percent match for loan and a fifty percent, um, for, um, uh, grant, uh, whether or not that's the city putting up all the loan dollars, um, or us putting up half of it at a point oh nine dollars for the loan dollars. I think that can be worked out in the future, but right now you just need something from the board that says, yes, we support this project and yes, if you do get the grant, we can move forward. Um, my, my thought on this, the best way to go forward is I was hoping Richard would be here. Um, but uh, to have Richard send a, um, poll as he's been using, um, and I believe we all got a poll recently on whether or not, um, the KESAPITA board would be supportive of moving for the, the grant for Oregon, uh, the large grant. And then, um, I would say that poll should be done by Friday and then we could have it on the agenda for next week with a letter of support for the project from the B O C C using the point oh nine dollars. That would be the most logical way for me to move forward on this. Um, another option we could have is, is we could do, um, a special meeting of the KESAPITA board. Um, the chair could call a special meeting, uh, with twenty-four hours' notice. Um, but being that we just took a poll on applying for a different grant, I think it would be just as easy, but um, I would leave it to my seatmates to make the determination.
Um, so first of all, I, I am on the airport board and I can't tell you how much I appreciate you, Jeff. And I look forward to. And I look forward to the future you're creating at the airport. I, you're diligent in your work. Um, you have cleaned up everything in the office down there. Um, I like the way that you present things to the airport board and how you're moving forward to make the airport self-sufficient. And that's a passion for you and I appreciate that. I like self-sufficiency. Um, I do also appreciate the city of the Dallas. Uh, they are our valued partner and to offer this to behalf of this helps our budgets. Of course, um, I would be in favor of the fifty fifty split. Uh, if it comes to that, um, I can see recapping some of that funding. But I also understand after years of being around the county of what the oh nine dollars are for. Um, and something just for history sake of poor and impoverished and what that airport can do for us. Years ago, I remember that UPS came and looked at the airport and they were gonna put a hub there. And we lost it. We weren't ready. We didn't have the the hangars, the strips, anything we needed, and we're getting ready. And something like a UPS hub is gonna give us a lot of jobs and bring in a lot of flights and a lot of fuel to help support that airport. So I look forward to a bright future at that airport.
Interesting you say that about the UPS because they've actually been training, both FedEx and UPS have been training smaller aircraft.
Good, they're coming back.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so and and we've gained, you know, we've gained D N R down there and some really valuable assets down at the airport. Um, I I think I agree with Mr. Anderson, it'd be prudent maybe to wait if time constraints are allowed. For um the poll to come back in because. He did get that, just get that out in his due back Friday, but I am in favor of moving forward. Uh, how that looks, I'm not sure what that takes to move forward to help you get this grant in on the twenty ninth.
I just, I have to submit on the twenty ninth, as long as I've got a commitment from both both agencies, and I do have a commitment from the city manager. Basically of the same caliber that he has a revenue stream of a available to do this and. Would just have to work out the financing with how that looks. And interested.
Well, it sounds like you have consensus from my two seatmates, but I would like to take this opportunity. To remind my seatmates of the public comment we just got literally half an hour ago about transparency. And openness and availability of the public. And if we are going to continue to bypass case of PETA meetings. Where we actually discuss it, where we actually allow public comment during a case of PETA meeting. And we're gonna start doing it via doodle poll. That eliminates any access for the public to be educated on a project and or testify on a project at a case of PETA meeting. I don't find that in suspirate of transparency. Why I understand the time constraints we're working on, it seems like we're entering. A doodle poll realm that we've never been in before. Um, that is reducing transparency. And reducing the public's ability to comment on projects if they so wanted to, but. You have consensus. Um, I would in that disagree with Commissioner Anderson on. The case PETA board being a consulting. Um, I believe there's a difference of legal opinion and it would be nice to get a legal opinion back on that. Because I believe this board has been informed that they are not the consultants, they are the decision makers. But that's up to a legal opinion.
And. I. My opinion. Have walked through that, understand it. I agree with Mr. Anderson. And if you'd like to request that legal opinion for what you're talking about, then you're free to do that. You're welcome to reach out for that um to answer that question for yourself. Uh, but moving forward, um. Go ahead.
Uh, if I may, um, I was bringing forward two options, uh, one being the poll like we did for another grant. Uh, the other being calling of a special meeting with case of PETA. Um, I would um entertain the idea for my seatmates uh based on Commissioner Christopher's um testimony. Um, that we could hold a uh case of PETA meeting um either Thursday, Friday or Monday. Um, and we could do that online and take public comment. Um, if you would so like, um, and just do it as a special meeting where this is the one item on the agenda.
And I, that's where I was going. I was trying to formulate that into. Uh, answering Mr. Christopher's concerns, uh, it feels like it'd be prudent to go ahead and request a special meeting of Casey PETA. Um, any suggestions on which day, Thursday, Friday or Monday from my seatmates or from staff? Because of scheduling?
I believe um this is why I asked if Richard would be available. Cause I gotta make sure that that Richard and staff are available.
Have you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The, when we do that, it turns into a doodle poll to find out what day is available. And time is available for everybody on the board to get a consensus and then. That's how we're gonna go with it, not just what's available for us.
I, I think if we call a special meeting, that's up to the commissioners and then the board. Uh, we reach out to the board and and they come. I mean, that's their obligation to be on that board. I don't think we doodle poll what works for them to be on that board and come in, especially in a special meeting.
Well, you don't have to, but that's been the historic precedent, so we can change that.
We have a workshop Thursday, um, and so we case of PETA usually meets in the evenings. I could do Thursday evening, um, and I believe the bylaws state that it is the chair's duty. To call the meeting in time that works, um, and so we can set a tentative um time. And then Richard can reach out to all the case of PETA members to make sure there would be a quorum. Um, but my my goal would be um to set a a case of PETA uh special meeting for Thursday evening.
Mr. Christopher, do you have a? I would agree for Thursday at six P M.
I can be back up here by six P M, yeah.
Yeah, so can I? I have other places to go back.
It's twenty second, correct?
Yes. If if you're available as well, because I hope you're there to.
Oh, I'll be there.
Do a presentation.
And I'm being will be here?
Uh, they're downstairs.
Okay.
Um, and then we also have an online option, so if you can't make it up in person, um.
In person, in person's always better, so I'll do that.
Yeah.
And can I ask how the board plans on informing the public of this meeting? And the team's link and how they might be able to comment?
So special meetings, according to case of PETA, uh, are outlined in the bylaws document of who you have to contact um and when. Um, you need to let the radios know and the newspaper know. Um, and then I would um advise that uh we direct staff to put the link to the teams meeting. Or I think they usually use teams on uh the news flash on the county website. Uh, we could always do it up here.
Yeah, I'm good with it up here.
Yeah, we could use ours and link that we're just fine.
But come up, Richard.
Brian Ben into the bar.
Oh, man. Apologies for my tardiness, I was in the finance meeting.
So uh we are moving towards um assisting the Columbia Gorge Airport with their request. On possible oh nine dollars. And it looks like for transparency, we're going to choose to call a special meeting of Casey PETA for Thursday night at six P M. And we'll hold it here in this room, uh, the room downstairs is busy. Uh, that way we could also uh advertise that they can connect via Zoom from this room. Um, so that would have you reaching out to all the Casey PETA members to see if you can have a quorum. And at least we'll take care of uh contacting newspaper and things that are required to publicize the meeting.
Okay, perfect. So KCP the meeting Thursday night, six P M.
Correct.
In these chambers.
And just one subject, Mr. Renard will be presenting.
Um, being that uh we have a current poll going out for another um. Potential grant, would it make sense to just uh include that uh on the agenda as well? Um, so that there is transparency as Commissioner Christopher is requesting?
Sure.
Um, and then I believe case of PETA's bylaws have the special meeting, how it's called, who you need to contact. Um, and then hoping that you or staff would be able to reach out to the case of PETA members to make sure that we have a quorum for Thursday night. Um, if not, um. Uh, if we can't have a quorum, we could um. Uh, potentially do it Monday, the twenty sixth, if my seatmates are available and Jeff's available. So just a backup in case we don't have a quorum.
I am not available on Monday, but.
I don't know that you're counting on my vote anyway, so.
I got city council Monday night.
Okay, um, well, let's hope we have Thursday available.
Okay.
And we can get a quorum. And then um on top of the requirements uh by statute, we'd also want to put the the meeting up on as a news flash. On the website, so if you could get um Lee and the uh information and uh for the meeting. That would be great. But case of PETA rules has everything that you need to know for call on a special meeting.
Okay, good to go.
You're available Thursday night, right?
I am now.
All right, I think we're good.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Renard.
Thank you.
And thank you for continuing to find grant dollars down there. Uh, thank goodness it's coming from Oregon. Keep it up.
No, he's been very good.
I'm doing my best. Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, department update, Lynn?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Even brought a helper today.
He takes notes. So to clarify, before I start this staff report based upon comments, um, our website does direct people. Um, to contact us for a copy. Um, if they want a copy of Title fifteen or Title sixteen, we've had a few people do that already. But we do have the little posting, we don't just automatically have it on there, but if they want a copy. They can contact us and we just zip one right to them. Um, we advertise in the paper for two weeks. Um, we have copies available on our desk, on our front counter of the the strike through and the draft. So that's just kind of where we go. That's the process. We have followed every title change since I've worked for the county. We adopt the titles based upon the state's schedule. And that's um given to me from the state level and they tell the cities and counties when to adopt. So that's the process we have that we follow. I'm adopting old title language. That for the most part has been argued and decided at the state level. So that's just kind of how that works.
I mean.
Yes.
Um, more importantly though, um, while we do a public hearing and take testimony on it. We don't actually have a choice of what we adopt and don't adopt, correct? Because it's state requires that we adopt it.
Correct. I cannot. Go less stringent than what the state says without going to the state to get permission. We can go slightly more restrictive in some areas, but again, if that's the case, you have to go to the state. To say locally, we want to do X, Y and Z. But otherwise, it's what they hand down to us. It's. I mean, it's it's the state's language. It's the, I should correct that. It's the international code councils language with the Washington State amendments to that. So. Kind of to clarify that part, um, but now I'll get into the staff report, which will give a little more language.
And one, one more question, um, just to make sure that we're we're clear. We had a comment today on whether or not Title fifteen um. Uh, can or should supersede anything in Title eighteen or nineteen? Um, I don't know if you were listening or not.
I was listening. Title nineteen is zoning. That's under the planning department. I'm not. I don't know who's Title eighteen. I am Title fifteen and sixteen, which is building code and factory assembled structures. That's the portion that I am. Now I'm not gonna say I supersede or go behind. My language in the code says, say a more stringent rule applies. So for example, residential construction, it may say five foot fire separation setbacks to property lines. But if zoning says five feet on the sides, twenty feet front and rear. Their distance supersedes my distance because theirs is the greater setback.
But if yours was the greater, yours would supersede theirs.
Correct.
So that, I'll wait for you to be done. I got a couple. Are you done? Okay, thank you. Um, so none of this is our language changes. It's all state language changes. So like in change in use. Being changed to use and change of occupancy, that was nobody inside this county that changed that wording. That state that changed that word.
Yes, and they for some reason like to play with the words, and so everything that we have typed up, I get to reformat how it's. Printed out, um, basically it means the same thing, but that is, yes, it correct, that is what they say.
But technically, if this board so chose. It can take the state minimum standard. Um, like I'm reading on this page. When it's talking about solar projects and it says a buffer of a minimum one hundred foot setback from the exterior property shall be required. This board can, if it chose to discuss this document. And make changes to said document, make that more restrictive and make it two hundred or three hundred or four hundred. If if this board so chose, we have the ability by law to do so.
We have the ability to make it greater than the minimum locally if we so choose.
If, correct, and so that's that's what I was trying to point out in this discussion. Uh, and with that, I would also um like for this board to take up this document. On a page by page item like we did Title twelve. And see if there's anything like that one hundred foot setback that this board feels needs to be more stringent than state law.
What document do you have?
The one she's.
That would be Title fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah, Title fifteen is the one he's referring to because that's the building code one.
What what sets the standards or your designs on whether or not we can uh add, become more stringent than than the state law? You said some things can be, some things can't be.
Right, so locally, if something's um necessary. Then we can adopt a a more stringent setback because maybe we have a lot of the streams. Well, they're two hundred foot buffers. I mean, that's where. You know, the county locally based upon conditions can say, um. You know, with the zoning or the topography, that sort of thing. Like our snow loads, we assigned the snow loads. We had an engineer go through, do calculations, all of this to set our snow loads. That's specific to us. Um, other jurisdictions don't have the elevation changes that we do. So those are the sorts of things where locally we have the flexibility.
Right, but I would I would also add that it's not just in building. It's it's all things, state sets minimum requirements and the county can go more than that if it so chooses.
Right, I'm only responsible for buildings, so that's why I always refer to that. But um, yeah, so I'll just, I'll do the staff report real quick. If anyone has further questions, then. Feel free to ask. The twenty one code cycle adoption is scheduled for March fifteenth, twenty twenty four. The twenty one code cycle adoption is scheduled for March fifteenth, twenty twenty four, after being delayed twice by the state. Initially, it was July first of twenty three, then it was October thirty first of twenty three. Now it's March fifteenth of twenty fourth. They have not, well, this were delayed again. So that's why we're all here talking about it. Part of the adoption process as directed by R C W nineteen twenty seven of the state building code and WAC fifty one fifty through fifty one fifty six. Click attack county updates Title fifteen to reflect which portions of the international codes in Washington State amendments are being adopted for the current code cycle in effect. The county is required to adopt the specified codes and can make local revisions where allowed. If we don't adopt it for whatever reason, then we have to contract. Like if we didn't have a building department, the county would have to contract with someone to do their review. Like a city, White Salmon maybe doesn't have their own person, but they have to contract with someone to do it. In addition to Title fifteen for building codes, Title sixteen for factory assembled structures is amended at the same time if any changes are necessary. At this time, Title sixteen is being updated simply to clarify some language that was not specific enough or clear. The twenty twenty one international residential code still allows flexibility of the jurisdiction to adopt or waive residential sprinkler systems for single family dwellings. The department is recommending to not adopt sprinkler requirements at this time. A great deal of discussion regarding the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Adoption has been ongoing and nothing has been finalized as of yet. Current understanding is that the jurisdictions are required to adopt, but still have the flexibility locally to determine the level of requirements that need to be enforced. And I just printed off the most current thing I could find this morning on extended Senate Bill sixty one twenty regarding this, and there are hearings today, for example. So I mean, there's it could change up till March first is what I've been told from the Washington Association of Building Officials and other people who we've spoke with. So that is still greatly being discussed. They're proposing D N R redo the map, so it's not so generalized to make, for example, we look red and yellow and green. The people making the decisions are in the gray area. So it's easy for them to tell us what to do, but they are trying to get D N R to redo a map, but that's going to take two to three years. There's also language that locally we could do our own mapping, but we have to follow a specific process if we do so. But again, they're still having discussions. It's going to go back and forth and until March first, there won't be anything more finalized. So we left it very, very generalized, the same as we do for the other codes we just say as adopted. Because that's all I can do for with that one. Proposing a new section to Title fifteen regarding newly added code language for industrial solar that will also pertain to other energy producing facilities to better define the requirements of Chapter twelve of the International Fire Code. This language was not available prior to the twenty one code, which is why we've never had the language. I B C, I F C, all of them are always playing catch up to industry because industry changed so rapidly and I mean, at the high level, they're working on twenty four codes already. But it takes a while to implement them. And so we're always behind. I mean, it's two thousand twenty four and we're adopting the two thousand twenty one. So I mean, it's just, that's just how the codes work. And there was not language before. So that's why I've proposed adding some language to the code, just to kind of clarify for people moving forward, what Title fifteen would have. This new section has been provided to the prosecuting attorney's office and has been approved as private presented in the draft. Both Title fifteen and sixteen have been reviewed and approved as to form. Due to the short deadline on the thirteenth, the consent agenda requested permission to advertise for the two weeks in the paper and public hearing is scheduled for March fifth at one P M. Any other questions? Any more you need from me?
I believe Commissioner Christopher requested that we go through this line by line. And I guess my question to Commissioner Christopher would be is is how would you propose to do that when we have a hearing scheduled on it?
Work. It The board can adopt whatever it wants to adopt. It can adopt it when it wants to adopt it, and it can work as often as it wants to work to get what it wants to do done. So that's not a valid excuse or just rubber stamp.
I I don't believe I was trying to say that we're trying to rubber stamp anything. I think the point I'm trying to make is is that staff is clearly stated that we are required by statute to adopt this by the fifteenth, correct?
Mm hmm. March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
As a public.
And we have a public hearing scheduled. So if we wanted to start making changes to it between now and the public hearing, would that mess up procedurally the process?
It would make hitting our deadline crazy tight.
If at all possible, because we'd have to go back to the prosecuting attorney for review again.
And what exactly are the consequences for not hitting the deadline?
We'd be out of compliance with what the state building code council instructs me to do.
And how long have you been talking to us about this?
We started talking about it last year. And then it got postponed. So we talked a little bit more about it. I mean, it's always available.
Right.
You know, for discussions.
So we've had time.
We've had time in this this new section. I mean, you can strike it entirely. We can tweak it a little bit. But I mean, it's something I was proposing adding into Title fifteen for clarification based upon the fact that they added language to the fire code that was previously not there. And industrial solar and other energy producing means are a concern to the board and to the citizens. So that's why I was proposing adding that.
Right, but let's be crystal clear that this board can continue to have its public hearing with the document that has been presented and given to the public. It can take public testimony and it can change the word one hundred to two hundred before it signs it if it wants to.
Yes, I can do that.
By March, whatever date your deadline is. So but the whole, we don't have time.
Well, I'm ready. I mean, I'm willing for workshops. Come back this afternoon, whatever.
And I think that's
You want me to do.
I believe that's what I heard Mr. Anderson say, propose a timeline of how you would like to work on this. Not that we wouldn't work on it. And as far as passing a document through public comment and public hearing, and then we can line item, change something, we're going against our transparency thing if we do that. If we're going to make any changes, we need to do it prior to a public hearing that's already been legally scheduled. And we've been on a timeframe. So if you'd like to work on that document, propose a workshop, propose a date, and I'll be there.
I don't understand that. You just said that
Prior.
We can't change it before the public hearing.
No, I did not. I said, we need to change it before the public hearing. I'm not in favor of just letting a public hearing that is valuable and scheduled and staff has worked on come forward and the public thinks they're reviewing and commenting on a document that you stated we could have the public hearing. And then if we choose to line item, change something, we can just change it. And you're bringing that back.
You realize that is the purpose of the public hearing.
But they would not know what our changes might be. They're approving and commenting on what Lynn has prepared. And then down the line, we would just arbitrarily make another change because we choose. I I would prefer to have a full document to them that they can comment on, that they know how we feel and what we see in that document as is.
Correct. But if you're going to have the document in the hearing in two weeks, you need to present the document today, which is that document, not a document with potential changes that we don't even know are going to be changes until the board has a discussion on the change.
So is your, are you asking for approval of that document today so that we're ready for the public hearing? Do we have time in between the fifth? That we could have a meeting and we could, we could at home, go through this document, line item, and sit down at a workshop with you and say, this is what we see. And then we could affect those changes before you get to that public hearing.
That's why we're here today is to let you know what changes are being proposed
Okay.
to Title fifteen and Title sixteen so that you have time to let me know what
How you feel about.
I don't seek permission to adopt until after public hearing because that's what we're, that's I'm just presenting to let you know what's being prepared for the public hearing. So you know, the the minimal changes, if we've had anything in the past, when we've done public hearing, the P A's office has always been very quick to review as to form and get it right back to us. They understand the deadline. So but no, I'm not asking for permission of anything today because we're just presenting as to you what we're presenting to everyone else.
So again, if you have changes you see and you've brought them up today that are potential, I'm willing to work with you whenever we can as soon as possible so we can get those back to Lynn. So she can get a review to see if that's where this document needs to go.
And the hun- the one hundred feet was chosen because that is what they had determined way back when they very first did the first wind turbines as a minimum distance to property lines. Whomever. It was it was skip and
Right, but not it was county, not state.
Yes, yes, that was the county. Yes, it was the, at the time, that director.
So that one hundred minimum is not a state.
It is not.
Correct. That is a county that could easily change with the stroke of a pen.
Correct.
That's my point.
Yes, I started with the hundred because that's what they used for the wind turbines.
Then what is? I'm trying to remember because I did do the research on Title sixteen and the and the state changes. And we're focusing on one thing, but I thought in the state changes, there was a minimum setback for industrial solar.
There may be, but I did this enough months ago that I would have to go find it.
Which I think it'd be great if we did some research on that. I also, when you're there are a lot of changes in Title sixteen, Title fifteen that are going to have enormous impacts on the cost of construction from what I'm seeing and hearing at the state level, up to forty thousand dollars per house. And commercial buildings even more so, potentially in the cost of a million dollar plus on just the the White Salmon Pool project. So but a lot of that we can't change. The new the new section, I do think that I have no I look forward to having a discussion on those standards.
And as far as the energy code, that's going to be the hardest impact, as you're saying. Commercially, there are going to be more requirements that the energy code portion is implementing. But as far as the residential code, they have left it at the two thousand eighteen. They did not move forward.
On the energies.
On the energy code for residential.
Yet.
Yes, yes, it will be, but they're staying at the two thousand eighteen code for energy on residential only.
So Madam Chair, I don't have a problem going through this document and presenting this board with what I think needs conversation.
Okay.
I do worry about changing it from one hundred to two hundred before the public has had a chance to, or three hundred or seven hundred or whatever the number is. Changing it without, before we send it to the public is also not taking public attention. I think we kind of need to hear from the public. Maybe they don't have a problem with. Pretty sure they do. But maybe they don't. Maybe we're going to arbitrarily between me and you decide a hundred and seventy eight feet. What if they say two fifty?
It's not that what the public testimony is for to gather that.
That is what the public.
In the in the past, that's
Correct.
how it's been is we've listened to the public's testimony. And then once that comment period is closed, then the board can directly be based upon public comment or whatever.
That was my.
To take this line and make it two hundred and fifty feet instead of one hundred.
After the public hearing.
And then we amend the draft to be the the final verdict.
Now you can then leave it open for written comment on our changes. Or you can hold it open for another week and allow more public comment the week after we make the changes. That's the way a hearing works.
Process. What I think would be really helpful for the public would be a little bit of a white paper that we can put up with a notice noting what we actually can and can't change so that the public because you can go through Title fifteen and be like, of course, I don't like this, 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 and this. But most of that is set by state statute. So if staff, I'm sorry for the extra work, could come up with a little bit of a white paper that puts the boundaries so that the the public, as well as the commissioners, know what is and isn't available to be to be amended. That would go a long ways to helping ensure that testimony during the the hearing is is apt and and is actually things we can work on.
Right, but essentially, everything in the document can be amended as long as it's amended more strict than state code. Period.
I will look for the language to clarify all that, where it says we can and where it says we can't. I'll I'll get that taken care of. I'll bring it down Thursday when we have workshop. Just so you have it.
Thank you.
If that works.
That works.
But I will work on that today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Nothing more, Dan?
Nope, so much. I think you're good.
All right, I'll go get to her.
Thank you. Oh, ten A M. Mr. Hunter. We've got, sorry. You're keeping us to task today.
We'll catch up.
Not a very big stack. That's nice.
No, not a lot.
Yeah.
We'll save that later on.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I was reading your.
For you to say, go ahead. Waiting to hear to go ahead.
You can just forge right ahead when you're in that chair.
Okay, we've already gone through the consent agenda. Thank you. We have a final pay estimate to Knife River in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty five thou- five dollars, and that is for our curb warning signs and guideposts. That's federal funding from the HISP Act. So that is all federal dollars, just to pass through. We have two public hearings this afternoon, or we have a bid opening, not a public hearing for the twenty for our annual striping contract. And then we have a continuance of the Title twelve road standards. Hopefully that will take care of the Title twelve road standards. We'll see when one o'clock comes.
Are you going to bring us a My bad. When you do that, please bring us a copy of the wordage change if you didn't already plan to do it.
The wordage.
The the beauty wordage change of the reason why we.
Oh, that's the franchise, sir.
Oh, that's franchise, sir.
Yes. We haven't, we haven't quite finalized all that yet. So that'll be, we'll have to reschedule. No, this is just the Title twelve. So you you have the latest copy or hopefully the last copy which has our minor grammical changes. Okay, on the construction.
Okay, on the construction side, we're crushing in Badger Gulch. Uh, we were also working on drilling and getting prepared for blasting at Matson. They blasted on Monday for the last time in Badger. Uh, needed a little bit more material. Design side, the annual striping will be open today. We're finalizing Sundale to go out to bid hopefully next week. Um, we're moving forward with the rest of our federal projects. Uh, which is bridge replacement and snowed roads coping and things like that. On the maintenance side, east side we're cleaning ditches, mowing in Alderdale and doing some brushing. Um, ditch is when we say that we have some slides and rock creek we're cleaning up. West side, we're brushing, patching holes and cutting down some dead trees next to the road. Uh, on the facility side, jail roof, we have, uh, two punch list items left. They're nothing to do with structural, they're just, uh, cosmetic. And that will, I'll take care of the jail roof. Superior Court remodel, uh, the small works contract was on, was on your, uh, consent agenda. Other contracts to follow to get that project up and running for the Superior Court remodel. Events at the, at the fairgrounds and other events, period. We have one birthday party scheduled in next, or this Saturday. At, in the exhibit building. Fuel Island, we're working on the designed, um, auditor's voting area. We're painting this week. Floor covering award will be next week. And, uh, our goal is to have that thing up and running very soon. HVAC contracts, um, the courthouse, we're putting that, that's out to bid right now for the, uh, replacement of the P, of the, uh, unit in the PA's office. Uh, storm damage is the same. Oh, I never did finish that. How did that happen? Anyway, we replaced the, or replaced the jail door, Sallyport door this weekend. Um, I actually, it was yesterday and it gets wired in today. Uh, our electric contractor doesn't work on, didn't work on the holidays, but, uh, overhead door did, so they came in yesterday and put in the door. And, uh, that is it today.
I had a quickie for, uh, the quarries. The quarries, obviously, when they open, they go through permitting and go through SEPA and all that kind of stuff. Then if we don't blast rock for five years and then we go in and decide we're going to blast more rock, does it have to go through the SEPA process again? It just stays under the original permit for as long as that permit is valid, the SEPA is valid, correct?
Yes, and that is valid for a long, long period of time. We, we permit.
Is that a local SEPA or is that through state ecology that does gravel pits?
No, we have a permit through state ecology. We also have a permit through DNR.
Who does the SEPA?
We do the SEPA.
Local.
Local and the, most of them have CUPs. All matter of fact, all, all of them have CUPs. Because they're not in industrial areas, so they're not, uh, they're not zoned out right to have them, so they've all had CUPs and SEPAs.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, I have one question. Um, going through the bills, I noticed we are paying for HughesNet, um, for the Glenwood shop. Um, how often do those gentlemen use the internet, um, up there? And is that something that we should be thinking about upgrading to like a Starlink? So they can get a little bit higher bandwidth up there for doing their research and everything else they need to do on the internet?
Good question. We are actually working with Randy on the potential for Starlink. We need it because of the way our time is entered in. Uh, we, we, well, we have, yes, we have a, we have a crew that works out of that shop. So the foreman enters his time and he sends it down here, and that's our internet connection to our system here. They also use it when they do work up there in the shop because everything done on mechanics is all done on the network now, so, uh, that's why we have internet.
So that's, that's exactly what I was thinking and, and like when you're downloading these manuals and documents that are gigabytes now, HughesNet just isn't going to cut it, so. Um, I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, that, that's something I would definitely be in favor of, you know, uh, upgrading that system for their efficiency.
Yes, we are definitely looking into that with Randy to do that. And, uh, we've also looked at doing, improving our internet in white salmon too. Uh, it's not very good there.
What are, what are we using in white salmon?
I believe it's CenturyLink.
Oh. I think Charter has a line.
Uh, might maybe Charter, I don't, I, I just know.
Charter would be good.
Yeah, whatever we have up there and I've been, you know, because our shop's a little bit out of town, barely, it will eventually be in the city, but. Uh, yeah, so we're working with Randy on that. We've been going back and forth because it just doesn't have enough power to drive the, because that's one of the main shops. They do everything there. So, uh, yes, to us, internet's really important, so we are working with Randy to figure out what will work in all the areas, so we're not having piecemeal stuff. But yes, you are correct, with Starlink is one that we've looked at.
Okay.
That's it?
Have nothing.
Okay, see everybody at one.
Thank you. Uh-oh. Thank you.
Oh, it's.
Madam Chair, do you want the pay estimate real quick before we move on to Sheriff?
Sure.
Uh, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pay final pay estimate for curbing warning signs and guideposts CRP three seventy-one in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents.
I will second the motion.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Pay estimate passes, thank you. And Sheriff Fump Songer and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Not as thick, which is nice. Thank you, Lauren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, there you go, my glasses. Everybody doing good?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Starting now on number one item, there were a total of eighteen hundred and three calls for service from January first, twenty twenty-four to February twentieth, twenty-four. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of a hundred and eighty-three civil papers during the same time period. I have two press releases that I'm going to go over. Item two, press release dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, titled Investigation Into The Death Of Hannah Walker. On October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at approximately six fifty PM, Clickatack County Sheriff's Deputy Tony Warren received a call of a missing person who had gone swimming in a creek at Trout Lake, Washington. The missing person was identified to be Hannah R. Walker, a white female, age thirty-one, from Portland, Oregon. Upon investigation, the missing person incident, Miss Walker's body was found in the Trout Lake Creek where she had gone swimming. And an extensive investigation was conducted in regards to Miss Walker's death based on Hannah Walker's mother's belief that her daughter's death was a homicide, not a drowning. The death investigation started on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two and throughout twenty twenty-three with the assistance of several Clickatack County Sheriff detectives, the Clickatack County Prosecutor Coroner's Office, the Clark County Medical Examiner's Office, the Washington State Patrol Crime Laboratory, and the Washington State Attorney General's Office. The case has been thoroughly reviewed by my staff and me along with the Washington State Attorney General's Cold Case Homicide Investigators. Based on available information and evidence, it appears that Hannah Walker's death was accidental drowning. Though foul play cannot be ruled out completely, there is no evidence or probable cause to believe that a crime was committed. Should new information become available that is reasonable and credible, the case could be reopened at some point in the future. Second press release, February first, twenty twenty-four, titled Transit Level Three Sex Offender Arrested, then released by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office immediately from the jail custody without conditions. I would point out, a level three sex offender is considered a, to be a person who will most likely, a state most likely to recommit a sex offense. I would further, further point out that when a sex offender moves into Clickatack County from another state or from another county within this, our state, the sex offender is required by law to register as a sex offender with the Clickatack County Sheriff's Office within seventy-two hours. On January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Clickatack County Sheriff's Office Deputy Tony Warren had developed probable cause that a transit level three sex offender by the name of Tanner Sinclair Carrico, age forty-seven, white male, five foot eleven, two hundred pounds, blue eyes and brown hair, had moved from the Dells, Oregon into Clickatack County and has been living in Clickatack County for over a year. And this is based on law enforcement contacts with Carrico in Clickatack County. But at the time, did not realize he was a regi- registered level three sex offender out of Oregon. Deputy Warner's probable cause for arrest Carrico is based on Carrico's violating Washington state law by failing to register with the Clickatack County Sheriff's within seventy-two hours of moving into our county. Carrico may end up facing charges in Oregon for leaving the state and not notifying the state of Oregon that he left their jurisdiction and supervision as a registered sex offender. Tanner Sinclair Carrico has multiple previous sex offense convictions, many in Wasco County for sodomy, sex abuse one, public indecency felony, and sex abuse three misdemeanor. Mr. Carrico is considered the worst of the worst and is a potential danger to the citizens of Clickatack County, in my opinion. The press release that I put out on February first generally reads the following. On January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Clickatack County Sheriff's Office deputies made contact with Tanner Carrico, a transit sex offender from the Dells, Oregon. He was located on the eighty-eight road outside of Trout Lake where he was living in Clickatack County. Clickatack County Sheriff's Office Deputy Warren and Sergeant Joe Riggers arrested Carrico for failure to register as a sex offender with the Clickatack County Sheriff's Office. He was transported to the Clickatack, uh, Clickatack County Jail and booked on that charge. For the last two months, Clickatack County Sheriff's Office has received numerous reports and complaints about Mr. Carrico near the communities of Trout Lake, Beezy Corners, and Benjham, Washington. His erratic behavior caught the attention of the US Forest Service Law Enforcement where Carrico was reportedly camping for a short time and harassing various heartgoers in the Clifford Peninsula National Force. On February first, twenty twenty-four, the Clickatack County Jail received a memo from Prosecutor's Office to release Tanner Carrico immediately without conditions. The jail staff escorted Mr. Carrico to the Sheriff's Office where I required him to register as a level three sex offender in order for us to keep an eye on Mr. Carrico within our county. Because Mr. Carrico is a transit level three sex offender who is living in his vehicle, a red Toyota minivan, he is required to report to the Sheriff's Office weekly and report where he has been staying in our county. Mr. Carrico is a level three sex offender. His information can be found on the Clickatack County Sheriff's website. Notifications and Mr. Carrico's photos will be forthcoming to the Trout Lake community. The Clickatack County Sheriff's Office will continue to investigate all of our current cases involving Mr. Carrick. We do not take Mr. Carrick's release from our jail custody lightly. All of our current cases lately, he is a real danger to the community. I might add, and that's pretty much the end of that. Anytime this prosecuting attorney's office releases somebody from our jail and he had probable cause, I don't know if he read it or not, but he had probable cause, but release somebody from our jail, that may end up hurting one of our citizens, seriously hurting one of our citizens, is unbelievable. And as sheriff, my job is to protect the citizens' safety of this community. And I will stand up to that prosecutor every time that happens. And I apologize to Mr. Quinell if that upsets him. Bottom line is, my job is to protect the public, period. He, as a prosecutor, he has every right to either file, not file, dismiss. That's his lane of travel and I understand that. I have a different lane of travel. Protect the citizens, I serve. Thank you.
As myself being a victim of childhood sexual violence, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just have one question too about process. Um, does that release process also not involve the judges and the courts? Is that not reviewed by the court system? That is not a motion that has to go before the court.
Prosecutor has that.
But the prosecutor drafts a motion and it goes before a judge? Is that how that happens?
Well, I don't know if this did or not. I don't think so. I think.
He didn't file the charge with the court.
To be released, it does not take a judge's signature.
Correct. He sends a memo over that says release from custody.
Without conditions.
Without conditions.
Yeah. Yeah, could you?
It's happened on numerous occasions with various cases.
Uh, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, that is, that is a lane that, that we don't have any part in and I don't want to play in that sandbox, most definitely not. Um, I do have concerns though, um, and, and I read your, your update, uh, Carmen. Um, my concerns is I'm following Mr. Carrico and the community Facebook pages as well. And it seems like they're continuing to escalate towards the vigilante justice, um, point. What do we have and do we have anything that we can say publicly that we have planned that, that can hopefully simmer some of that potential for vigilante justice?
Let me make it crystal clear. Anybody that takes vigilante justice will be held accountable. We will not tolerate that nonsense. Mr. Carrico, even though I believe he's extremely dangerous individual, as long as he follows the rules, then he needs to be left alone, but I want people to keep an eye on him. Because I'm here to tell you, based on my experience in child molestation and murder cases, Mr. Carrick was a dangerous individual. But we would not tolerate vigilante.
Let me know. You want me to start? You ready for me to start? Click, Clicktack County has become a destination for many outdoor enthusiasts and the cold and the snow doesn't stop those who enjoy snowmobiling, cross-country skiing and hiking. And we are fortunate to have visitors coming and going, but we do need to be mindful of their safety. The communities of Trout Lake and Glenwood have been closely monitoring the whereabouts of Tanner Carrico, a level three sex offender who is homeless and is moving from one place to another, causing concern to many citizens. Community members are using Facebook to alert the snowmobile clubs, community groups, et cetera, of his whereabouts and oftentimes contact me directly so that we are aware of his movements. And the deputies are continuing to drive through those areas documenting his locations as well. At this time, Mr. Carrico has checked in at, as required to the Sheriff's Office. And this, but this doesn't make him any less dangerous. And, uh, almost on a daily basis, I'm getting texts and, and I understand the concerns of the citizens. But like Sheriff Songer said, we can't have vigilante, um, citizens out there either. So we hope that they just continue to call and report to the Sheriff's Office, um, as, as necessary. The deputies have responded to five hundred and thirteen calls from January seventeenth through today. The numbers are provided in an attached report where you will see we have had five burglaries, twenty-two domestic disturbances, twenty-one motor vehicle non-injury collisions, and sixty-seven traffic violations, as well as six DUIs. We started really tracking the sixty, the traffic violations this year in anticipation that having all of that documentation, we can get more funding from the Public Safety Commission or traffic emphasis throughout the county. Reserve Deputy Clinton is preparing the Osprey for the upcoming season. Reserve Deputy Search and Rescue member Tim Harding will be taking the Osprey to Tacoma in March for BOSAR training. That's specifically for search and rescue volunteers. And then the Osprey will be going over to Clover Island in Tri-Cities for three weeks in April to be used for the BMLE training, and that's for the basic rain law enforcement program. Reserve Deputy Clinton and Deputy Howard will be attending one of those weeks at Clover Island. I can't say enough about Reserve Deputy Clinton. He has been spending countless hours preparing the Osprey to to go to these various trainings. There's a huge checklist. We've been, there's been some purchases for the boat to make sure that it's, you know, all up to speed when it goes out. We're hoping, I think we've got four more spots reserved for BMLE. If we have the deputies available, it looks scheduling is the tricky part for them. Deputy Warren and Deputy Corning have been working with their firearms training. They've been doing night trainings down at the range. And then defensive tactics training is scheduled for the next two quarters, and we're taking advantage of any free training as well. On the defensive tactics, the city of Goldendale doesn't have a DT instructor, so they will also be joining the department in training, which works out well because we all respond together, so it's nice when we know how we all train together. We, it just makes for a better scene. On another note, the two thousand and twenty-three patrol trucks had arrived. One has been assigned out to Deputy Melton, and then two are still in the works of getting all of their decals and upgrades and radios and everything installed. Deputy Beasley is working on the quotes for the two thousand and twenty-four purchases. Tahos are not available this year, so we will be purchasing two Durangos. They are the pursuit models, and he's been working out those details. The third one we
The Durangos are pursuit models? Are the Tahos, do those come in pursuit models or those just standard?
They're a police package, but the Durango is, that's what they call the Durango for police as a pursuit model.
Right, okay. Right, which pretty much just means the body style hasn't changed in a while.
Right, right. I know, so the one we have for the jail has the V-six. The ones that'll go for patrol will be upgraded to the V-eights. The third vehicle that we're looking at, Deputy Wells's truck is a twenty-five-hundred that he drives. It's adequate to pull the boat with. In order to save some dollars, we're gonna probably just assign that to the boat and have it as a, an extra rig when we have one breakdown or whatever, because we currently don't have any of those. And then we'll replace his possibly with a Chevy half-ton truck. They had some, there was a lot that had some in stock. So we're hoping that that would shorten our timeframe of getting a vehicle replaced. Because as you know, sometimes this has been a long nightmare of getting vehicles. If that truck is not available, then he'll be going to a Durango as well. So you'll see a change in our fleet. That's about all I have for now. Been busy, I can tell you that. I mean.
Yes.
Just to follow up, one last thing. Have we, in any of our press releases, have we asked the public to not confront this individual? Is that something that we see people are going out there now confronting him and following him when he's driving around, and there was an altercation yesterday, I understand? Is that something we might want to think about doing, is telling people, stay away?
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not encouraging people to go out there, but if they spot him doing something illegal, I want them to contact.
Well, absolutely contact us, but them contacting him is what, or or getting involved with him in altercations is what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, no, we can make that clear to them.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning. We had a high-risk inmate had to be taken to the hospital last night. He had vertigo after he sneezed and was very dizzy, so I came in to help out with security. But he's been returned to the jail and and is just fine. So I'm operating on a little bit of sleep and no coffee yet, so bear with me. Currently, the inmate status is there are thirty-three people in custody, including four people who are at Eastern State Hospital receiving mental health treatment. On the employees, we have a corrections deputy who has put in notice that they are moving on to a new career field, will no longer be with us. And that person will be gone in a little over a week from now. The new control board operator that I told you about last month has been in training at the jail since we being hired on February first and has been doing a great job because he applied for both the control board operator and the corrections deputy position and tested for both. He will be moving on to the corrections deputy position that's open here in a week or so. And we'll be interviewing applicants very soon, possibly this week for the soon-to-be vacant control board operator position. The RFP, the Request for Proposals that I submitted last month for the electronic medical records is now out to the public, and hopefully we'll be getting some proposals coming in soon. Let's see, equipment, there's, the new clothes washer is supposed to be installed in the jail this week, which will help out immensely. On mail, I give you a flyer, a two-page flyer, and there's a couple contracts included in this packet. Because of the massive increase in narcotics and drug-soaked paper, that is, you know, people will soak paper in drugs, write a letter, fold it up, put it in envelopes, send it to the jail. And the inmates, if they get it, they'll tear a piece of the paper off and chew it to get their high. So this is increased massively all across the country. If you Google drug-soaked mail in jails, you'll see all kinds of news reports. It's becoming very prevalent, and then we, we had just recently an inmate that we intercepted a letter going out explaining to his friend how to soak paper with drugs to mail him drugs into our jail. So it's becoming a real problem. So I'm looking into eliminating, or at least cutting way down on the amount of mail coming into the jail by using a company called Liam Connect. Currently, when the mail comes in, jail staff opens the mail, photocopies it, and gives it to the inmate. If it comes in an envelope marked legal mail, we're not allowed to open it or look at it, and it goes straight to the inmate. And you can imagine, you know, criminals are pretty good at figuring things out. So if they stamp it or mark it legal mail, it usually doesn't get looked at. So both are very easy ways to smuggle drugs into the jail. And with the increasing use of fentanyl and the danger of even a small amount of it, this is a huge concern for everybody's safety, the inmates and my staff, because the staff are the first ones to touch it. Liam Connect provides a way to eliminate the paper coming in through the mail. There's a video, they have a video demonstration, two of them actually, at liamconnect.com. People can check that out. And the best part of this is that they provide two kiosks, one for Liam Mail, one for Liam Legal. The Liam Legal is what the attorneys would use, encrypted and totally private. And the other, the Liam Mail is what loved ones, friends would use to send mail to their inmate. The best part about it is all that equipment is free. The user pays, I believe it's sixty cents to send a letter to an inmate in the jail, which is cheaper than an envelope and a stamp. So protecting everyone is my main concern. And I think I included, yeah, I did hand out a couple flyers on that too, so you can check that out. But I've included the contract. It's, like I said, it's free to the county, no charge whatsoever. They receive their money from the people who use it. If a family or loved one wants to even send a picture, if they have the app, they snap a picture at a baseball game, they want to send their loved one in the jail a picture, they just use the app and send it, it prints out in the jail on the equipment that's provided by Liam Mail. They provide the equipment, the touchpad, the printer, a cart to move it around to the cells, the paper and the ink.
Increase officer safety a bit.
Absolutely.
So the the cost, are they paid by the family on the outside when they want to send something in?
Yes.
And how expensive is it?
Sixty cents for a two-page letter.
Sixties.
Which is cheaper than mailing it.
It's just, yeah.
Right, and it notifies jail staff that there is a letter for whatever inmate, and then they either take the kiosk around to the cell blocks or bring the inmate to it and print it right there in front of them. If it's legal mail that comes in, they get notified that there's a legal documents for an inmate, and we don't see it. It comes on the, sorry, it comes on the touchscreen pad, lets the jail staff know which inmate has legal mail. The inmate is brought to the kiosk, and an envelope is put inside of a door on a chute where the printing paper comes out and drops right into the envelope. The door shut, they hit accept, the inmate signs on the screen, the screen takes his picture, the corrections officer signs on the screen, and as soon as they click accept, a message is sent with that picture of the inmate and his signature to the defense attorney. The documents are printed inside that closed door into an envelope. Corrections officer opens the door, grabs the envelope, and hands it to the inmate. We don't see it, but it's not coming through the mail. And it's all encrypted.
Yes.
Side question, you are gonna be interviewing for new corrections. Later in our discussion today is civil service commission appointments, and I was just checking with either you guys or staff on whether we have got an application for Mr. Rod Smith or Mr. Pete Mercer yet on file.
I talked to Mr. Mercer. He was honored that we asked, but he said, Bob, I'm too busy. Rod is excited about it. I think he's gonna come in to agree with the application, but he's real excited about doing that.
So we think he's bringing the application, but we don't have it on file yet. Okay, that helps me for later. Thank you.
You bet.
So you guys get to see all the mail that comes, not on the legal side, but you get to review it all, and and it's it's open, and so you guys and the prosecutor both can review everything that comes in or goes out? Because it has a way to go out as well, or is it just incoming?
It's just incoming.
Okay.
Going out, we provide the paper.
Okay. Yeah.
The old-fashioned way?
Yes.
So I guess the only thing
And that's reviewed as well.
Right, and the fact that it's free does, I'm trying to understand how it can be so for sixty cents a page, how they're making money. So do they have federal grants or something that's paying for a lot of it, or?
So the photo system we got was the same way. CTEL provided all of the equipment, all the kiosks, all the phones for free to us as well. They just make, they have so many contracts with jails that they make money.
That they're making. And then my other, my other question would be is, is so we have, as Commissioner Christopher notes, a lot of people who are elderly and on the east end of the county, you don't have access to the internet or anything. I just want to make sure that the the old way of sending letters is still gonna be available, and we're not gonna shut it off because some people wouldn't be able to communicate with their loved ones.
No, absolutely not, and and defense attorneys can still hand deliver documents to jail as well. But this will eliminate a lot of that because, you know, most people are mobile, they're on their phone.
Right.
They they use a computer and they can do it that way, and it's cheaper. But no, it would be available if Grandma in White Salmon wants to send a letter.
All right.
I've got more questions though.
Okay.
On your, I don't think you talked about, but the RFP that's out. I had, when I was at the Legislative Steering Committee, I had a really good update by the healthcare authority. And the healthcare authority has three hundred million dollars in, that's gonna be available in grants for technology, IT services, hiring of staff and training, adoption of certified EHR software, and the purchase of billing systems, development of protocols and procedures. I would love to set up a meeting with Director Quinn and you two, and of course, Bob, so that we can get you guys in touch with the healthcare authority, the people in the right places up there. I talked to them about potentially being a pilot program because there's no reason for us to go out and buy an EHR software when the state's gonna be coming up with their own certified ones that they want, that they will choose for you or you have to be in compliance with. And they were really excited considering that we're kind of behind, you know, a lot of places already have EHR software already in place, but the fact that we don't sets us in a really good position to be a pilot project for them, where they'll pay for everything to test out their their new system and how they want everything to run. So I'm sorry I haven't been in touch yet. It's been on my to-do list, but I really, really excited about trying to get on your guys' schedule in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you.
And then my last question, how many corrections deputies still need to go to the academy? Where are we at with that?
We've got one going in October, and there are two, there'll be two others that still need to go.
Is that including the person who's just now moving over?
No.
So then we'll have another one, right? And how far are you guys hearing right now that you're out for getting someone into the academy?
It'll be probably the middle of two thousand and twenty-five before we get any new people.
So
They come up with funding and start working.
Which is one of the things we're talking about. We're trying to get funding. We want to have six additional classes, and I think the legislature might give us three or two. But hopefully we can get some of our guys and gals in sooner if we can, so.
Excellent. Yeah, the law says that they need to go within six months of being hired, but a lot of them are a year, year and a half just because they don't have enough academies, so hopefully they they get it going.
And the academy's longer than it used to be, correct?
Yeah, it's ten weeks now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my last question.
Thank you.
Hello. So Jennifer and I finally connected. We spent hours on the phone Friday, and I shared all my spreadsheets, and we've moved everything over into one spreadsheet in a Google Sheet so we can live share it. So it's got the revenue, the wages, everything, all in one, as well as the expense budget. So we're moving in to the right direction on that. And then I'm just going through and updating with the wages as we were talking of doing the corporals and the sergeants. We need to do the corporals for the patrol and the sergeants for the jail in order to keep us compliant with state law. So we're starting to calculate what those differences are gonna be. So that's the number one priority from the sheriff here. On some cost-saving measures, because I'm trying to spend some time each month, cost-saving, WAX, which is our bank card or Chevron, they approached us and let us know that there's a state fleet card through the state contract for fuel, which means instead of paying consumer prices, we get the state rate. I haven't seen what the rate is, but it is discounted as opposed to consumer. So we're shifting over to that, so we will be having a fuel savings for that. But also on top of that, the card will also pay for Lashwab. Um, for that, but also on top of that, the card will also pay for Lushwab, Valvoline, Ford, um, and then we'll keep an eye on whoever else comes on board within their fleet program. So we'll also be seeing savings um at the state contract for those as well. So we are pursuing state rates for as much as we can. Um, and then as Carmen mentioned, the trucks have finally arrived for the twenty twenty-three uh allocations and we do have a few additional expenses that are coming that I just paid. But I'd like to request, formally I will request uh next week um that we can roll those expenses into the twenty twenty-four VRNR like we did last year. Um, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up rather than take it out of our regular expenses. Um, is that okay? I mean, does that make sense to you guys? I see a rumpled eyebrow over there. Into the light. Is there, the money went back into?
So what you're saying is it was budgeted in twenty twenty-three, just wasn't used in twenty twenty-three because you didn't have a vehicle to use it on.
Yep.
So you're trying to, so it went right back into VRNR last year. And you're, yeah, there's just, I'm making sure my head is following the money trail.
That's okay. I haven't had coffee yet either, so you know, or at least enough. Um, so anyway, uh, does that make sense?
We didn't move the money out of any funds though, right? It's, this is just strictly.
But it's allocated, um Jen, is that? Yeah, so, so they, the way Lee had always done it was this is set for twenty twenty-three. And if you didn't use it all, it went back into the fund. And then whatever you didn't use just goes back into our VRNR fund. Um, you can only use it for the three or four vehicles. Um, and then you have to request to be using it for previous years' vehicles when it occurred at the very ninth hour of December twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, so.
Right, so, so in essence, you're, you'd be in, but the money didn't come out of VRNR into a budget. We didn't move any dollars.
No, it's, it's.
Stayed there.
It's, it's, yeah.
So.
Money didn't get, money didn't get moved. It was only a budgeted item that didn't get.
It didn't, it was a budgeted item in VRNR, not in your budget though, right?
Right. But we've had expenses to gear um for fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars that we've paid for out of this year's twenty twenty-four expenses because they needed to be paid. But I'd like to have it moved and reallocated over to VRNR because we need, you know, that way.
I hope, hope you can work this one out with Jen, because I'm getting a little confused.
Yeah, I got lost.
Okay.
Between gear and between.
Okay, gear, gear provided a bunch of supplies for the trucks and they needed to be paid quickly. Um, and the bills came in twenty twenty-four, which means that they're not approved for twenty twenty-four VRNR. There are four twenty twenty-three VRNR when you look at the VIN numbers. And so we can't use twenty twenty-three vehicles in twenty twenty-four VRNR.
I think what, anything related to the rollover vehicles in that budget area? Whether gear does it or whoever, that's related to those vehicles. I think what Karen is getting at, she'd like to see that all under the rotation for the vehicles. Because then you've got accountability, actual line item accountability, what that vehicle costs, what's associated with it. Uh, because if we pay for some repairs, it's gonna, not repairs, sorry. Add-ons uh that they put on the vehicle because their state law requires stickers and so forth, lights and so forth. But that doesn't come out of the.
Repair and maintenance.
Repair and maintenance. Uh, it, it just, it's a way of tracking the money much quicker. But obviously the end result is going to be up to the board decision.
I can write it out so that you can see what I'm talking about.
That, that would be great. Uh, if you and Jen can get together and put it on paper how it works. Cause, cause my thought is, it's, it, you know, when we buy the vehicle and we add on to it, all of that comes out of VRNR.
Right.
And so, so.
But at the end of the year, I'm not allowed to use last year's VRNR for this, for last year's truck.
So what you'll likely need is an amendment to your, your VRNR budget, not, not your budget. Just to include the cost for that.
Last year's.
But you, but at the beginning of, you'd need that by the end of the year, because you should still be using the money out of VRNR currently for twenty twenty-four, because you have a.
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, but this is twenty twenty-three vehicles.
Right, right. So that'll just need a, a budget amendment, but it shouldn't need anything else. It shouldn't be hitting your budget in any other way.
Yeah, I, but I had to pay the bill.
Right.
Because gear needed to pay their bill, so. All right, that word down so that I get it right next time.
Yeah. Just add it to the things you're working with, Jen. Sorry, Jen.
So Civil Division, we've been handling a lot of uh paper service and records requests. McKenna is uh handling a number of items that are coordinated with the prosecutor's office. Um, and then our CPLs, our CPL hard card printer and our ID card printer has now died, so I will be working with IT to requisition uh the next, the next one. So we can continue printing those hard cards. Um, that way when the next person drops it in the lake or the river, they can retrieve it. And um, we don't have to keep printing paper ones. Um, sex offenders, yes, uh, Mr. Carrico has been uh, as of last Thursday, he was getting looks and everything, but I had not heard, he had not reported any um, actual infringement on his uh. Civil liberties. Yeah, I was trying to find a nice way of putting that. And so uh, any record, any information that you have, if you could please forward it to Carmen, that would be great.
Was trying to find the Facebook.
Yeah. Um, Range Timber Program, we are still in the off-season. Uh, body worn cameras are functioning perfectly. The jail is now up and running, in fact. Uh, K nine Profi, if you noticed on Instagram and I believe on uh, the Facebook page, he received his Valentine's box and that dog is just very spoiled. We'll just say that. His fan um sends him a box every holiday and he knows it is his box and he receives all kinds of great goodies. And he looks forward to it every time he can get one. Uh, Marine Program, we have hit the restart on our Marine Program, so we are back to needing a hundred and thirty-three boat hours and ninety-two inspections. And um Randy and team are working on their plan for acquiring those hours. Um, and the new contract, the new MOU for the Osprey will be coming. It's going to be two years. Um, so they are very happy with what we've done with the boat and they are happy with um, just our care of the boat since prior to us, it sat in saltwater for so long, so. Um, and then just want to also say thank you to our posse and our scouts for everything. We will be um uh focusing a little bit on, on some fundraising for our K nine program. And we're going to utilize our posse and scout programs since they are very good fundraisers to raise some money for uh Profi and Profi's predecessor over the next few years. Um, since Profi is not retiring, but we need to look into the future. And we're going to let the, the posse focus on that. So um, that is, did I have any questions?
Mr. Christopher, any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions other than saying thank you for looking ahead on the dog.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because without doing so, I worry uh that we could potentially lose a dog and that would be bad.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, uh, when I was up in Olympia last, uh, last week, I sat down with uh Representative Mossbrucker and the question came up, animal shelter. Where are we at and where are we going?
I had to resend the leads document from Public Works over and the documents that we sent over, it stated, if you don't have a hard budget yet, skip this section. Now they want a hard budget. Um, and now that we have the hard numbers from Rick Miller and as to what it's going to cost. Um, we can now, next month, present it to you guys. And we know basically where we are. They're gonna, they're closer to contracting now. And um Susan from Department of Commerce is working on the documents.
That's where it was held up for a little bit, wasn't it?
Right.
And we've, we've got a design, preferred alternative, everything's done. Um, we haven't taken, do, we, do we need to do a SEPA? I wouldn't think so for the construction because it's on our, it's on county ground. Um, but we've got hard numbers. Is it above the cost of the, the, or the grant?
So we need to.
We need to go back and look at the design and see where we can cut and see where we can possibly look at shrinking down the size and then plan for expansion when the five oh one C three raises more money, they can do some add-on, but we can have a minimum. Uh, instead of having sixteen to twenty kennels, we can have five or six. And then the foundation can have uh responsibility for building more.
When does the dollars, when, when did the dollars need to be spent by?
Uh, we've got one more year is what I was told.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're still in our window.
Okay.
And um, so we're just now needing to modify the outline of the building and cut back on some of the amenities. Um. What we need and what we want and um bring that dollar amount into alignment.
Money just doesn't go as far as it used to, does it?
No, it doesn't.
And by the time you get done with your, your plan, the, the cost of doubled probably again.
Yeah.
Are we um, before this board votes to approve, are we going to um, see a management plan?
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming the, the public's going to want to know whether this is a kill shelter or non-kill shelter and things like that. So I think that would all be a part of a decision-making process.
Well, I, I just off, just shooting from the hip here. Uh, I don't plan on it being a kill shelter. No. If we have to have a dog put down, then we'll go to a veterinarian or something like that. Uh, one other thing before I forget, when you get old, if you don't, you know. Um, you mentioned the Health Department, they have some grant money uh related to mental health and various things like that.
The Healthcare Authority, yeah, the State Healthcare Authority. I sent you an email on.
Yeah, yeah, uh, out of the hundred I get, I'll, I'll see if I can find it. Uh, the uh, is that money or can that money be used to put on a full-time nurse in the jail?
Uh, it has what it can be allowed for, and so that was, that's where I'm hoping to go with a conversation with you guys. So that we, we have a plan kind of together and then we can approach the Healthcare Authority um in Tyrone up there. Um, and so that we can hopefully save taxpayer dollars here in Click-Attack County.
Well, and then less than a liability in the jail, we had a RN, RN on board.
That, yeah, exactly.
And back to the animal shelter, any animal that will need to be put down, will be, need to be put down due to dangerous dog standers. Not just a puppy coming in, but it's a dangerous dog that has attacked um, and possibly killed another animal um or attacked a human, so. Or has rabies.
Right, I, I would just, for me, I would like to see that um written as a policy statement.
Yeah.
Uh, because the public's going to ask and I can't say, well, we, we kind of think, we kind of want to go, you know.
No, 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 we, and the Board of Directors that we've um put together, that's uh going to be part of their task. Which includes Carl, the veterinarian.
Look forward to the presentation. It's been a long time coming.
Yes, we don't want to lose that opportunity.
Thank you. Is that it for today?
I have nothing further.
I have nothing further.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much. Good to see you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You as well.
And with that, lunch?
Yes. I am fine with that. I don't, we have an afternoon, so we can talk about anything else this afternoon.
I'm working on it.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch hour, noting we will be back at one o'clock.
Forbid a little second motion.
Motion and second in a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Lunch passes. Thank you. Good afternoon. Uh, welcome you back to the Click-Attack County Commissioners Regular Business Meeting for February twentieth for our afternoon session. Um, so we are going to begin with a bid opening for the annual striping program. Thank you.
Madam Chair, uh, we have a bid for the annual striping program with an engineer's estimate of four hundred thousand dollars. We received uh three bids. Uh, number one is Hicks Striping and Curbing LLC out of Brooks, Oregon. Sheet six of six. The addendum number one has been acknowledged. Uh, the bid bond is present. Um. Read the total bids for alternate A one and A two from sheet one and two. Total alternate for bid one, A one is six hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and ten cents. Uh, total for alternate A two bid is four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eighty-six dollars and ten cents.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stripe Bright Incorporated out of Washington.
Uh, just to add a little clarification in that last bid between A one and A two. A one was solvent-based paint for the line and A two was waterborne paint for the line.
We're trying to see which one might be a better.
I was confused why there's a A and a B and so.
The addendum is available. The bid bond is present. Um, alternate A one for Stripe Right is four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um. A two is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Go. And the last one we have is Specialized Pavement Markings LLC out of Walton, Oregon. Addendum number one is acknowledged. The bid bond is present. Alternate A1 is $521,746. Alternate A2 is $441,798.
Now, question, ma'am?
Yes.
What, we're obviously doing a test run with the bidding between the paint products. Is there a longevity? One lasts longer than the other one?
Solvent base lasts way longer than waterborne paint does. Most people use waterborne now because it is cheaper, but it doesn't last very long.
Do we have a guesstimated number of years to redo?
I'd say like on some of our lower ADT roads that have solvent base, you could probably almost go like five, six, eight years, depending on the amount of traffic. Where if you put like waterborne on that, it might be like three to five years on a high traffic road. If you put waterborne on it, it's, you know, maybe a year or two.
Well, okay.
Damn. Madam Chair, having reviewed the three bids, I would make a motion to remand this back to the Public Works Department for a review and recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second and a discussion.
Other than I wanna thank the companies for providing the bid. And I'm thankful that most of them were not super outside the realm of the estimate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So we are going to continue the public hearing for the Title XII Transportation Standards. And letting the public know the hearing is to take testimony for or against the proposed revisions for Title XII.
And did we receive any written comments?
No, no clarifications, Sam.
Unless the board has.
No, I just, I wanted time to be able to look at the document that we were handed last week. To make sure that, not that I don't trust staff in what they said, but if I'm gonna sign something, I have to read what I'm signing. So the time was for me to read that book and go over the changes that were made to make sure I didn't have any issues with them and I do not.
I have, I had the chance to review it and thank you for the clarifications, making those clarifying comments with, that had no substantive changes. So thank you very much, staff.
So no further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, having before us the Title XII Transportation Standards, I would make a motion to approve.
And I will happily second.
Motion and a second and a discussion.
No, other than once again, thank everybody for their hard work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, look at that one thing.
On that one.
Thank you.
It absolutely was.
I appreciate all the effort and the studying by the board, Ted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we won't.
Thank you for your patience from the studying of the board.
And now it officially goes, takes effect, you'll see in the ordinance that you'll sign later, March first.
Okay, okay. Takes effect March first.
That's not long.
Hell.
No, thank you very much.
You.
Don't be a stranger. Okay, so moving forward, we've had a change in the Health Department update. And so we're going to move to any new business or unfinished business. New business.
Um, I hope everybody was, received the legislative update. I asked it to be sent out last Friday. I hope staff was gone and so it probably got to you on Monday or so. One check in to make sure nobody had any questions on any of those bills or if there's anything that we see going through that, that we'd like to comment on. I was not able to comment on the Frontier Counties bill because I was in, it was at the same time I was in the middle of a very important discussion for the WASC ledge committee. So I was unable to testify, but that's okay because it's still moving. I would bring to the attention though that at WASC ledge steering committee, the entire, practically the entire morning, that wasn't the bill updates was all on the issue of the tax shift that occurs with renewable energy projects. And we had a big white paper overview. I will get that white paper, all the whole email to you. But it was a very good discussion and a very enlightening discussion for the larger counties that don't understand why are we even thinking about this? After the end of it, the larger counties understand the, the issue now and that we're going to work on setting that as a priority. Actually, we voted on it to set it as a priority for the next legislative session. And so we are creating a subcommittee to work on it, of which I'll be serving on. So they've done an analysis and options I brought to the, you know, the attention of them. The income method of taxation and we need to review that and add that as an option to to possibly make some, some changes, but we, it was a really good discussion. I had a discussion with Paul Jewell afterwards on it as well and and you know, it's one thing, you know, when they put in the solar projects, they also don't pay the sales tax, which is also hitting the locals. So maybe making some changes to that legislation as well while we're working on this. So we're gonna try to take that holistic approach on it. But that's.
Hopefully through multiple bills, not, not tie the solar panel or the sales onto this.
I know.
Because they're gonna balk at both of them. I'd like to make them balk separate.
So the, that's, you know, Paul and I had a long conversation. It's, you know, we're gonna get together, come up with the, the county strategy and then keep enlarging the the tent because you know very well that the energy companies are probably going to be spending money going a different direction. And so trying to get them on board in any way. So one of the things that I committed to doing is trying to get an analysis of what Van did when we originally started dealing with it because Van had said it so that it was on a flat basis. And that's every, you know, and so it didn't, we didn't have a tax shift because it was kind of an income method agreement, I guess is the best way to put it. And so they paid less starting, but the county got the same amount overall, but it didn't shift it originally under Van. And then.
The problem is, is when it reverted back, it fell back on the depreciation method. And since anybody that's done taxes and depreciated their cars or anything else, you get, you know, twenty-eight percent the first year. I mean, it's a big numbers to start with. And then it tapers on depreciation because Van did it across the line. I am under the understanding from past assessors that we didn't collect all the money we could have at the beginning. So then when it shifted back, they fell back on the depreciation part of it and never had to pay the, the big chunks. So we ended up losing money under that strategy because it reverted.
That was.
If it didn't revert back, you'd be okay.
The, so when Van did it, it was this, which didn't include the tax shift, right? When the next assessor came on board and took it to the cost method under the pretense that we'll get a bunch more money the first year because there were new projects coming on board. So we got a bunch more money the next year. So some of the, some of the companies, you know, it dropped way down. Others, it started up higher. But in the end, it's costing us all because of the, the tax shift method. And so, so that's why if we would have followed Van's thing, they won't die at a time. It would have worked out fine.
Clarification now. It is only costing if a county chooses to take the one percent plus new construction bump. If the county does not take the one percent plus new construction bump on the year, the, the tax project goes into effect. There will never be a tax shift on that project. Just throwing all the information out there.
On, that would be on the, the counties. The, the income that the county gets, but you also have to think there's all the junior taxing districts too.
Correct. Did you, to have zero shift, the junior taxing districts would also not have to claim their one percent plus new construction.
Under, under Vans, that's what I'm saying though, under Vans, it made it level across.
I am, I am hopeful that the legislature can come up with something that's nice and level. That doesn't come into what the last time we went through this turned into being. The, the green energy companies only end up paying fifty percent of, you know, what they would have had to pay.
Right, right. I mean, we've been talking about this for multiple years. We've pushed it forward. The green energy companies pushed theirs forward and we found out we didn't have, you know.
Yeah, they polluted it quite nicely.
Yes, they, we didn't have the, the political goodwill to, to see it in our best interest or even in the county's interest at all, I would say. So I would, I would think that the the different ideas are being talked about as, as a potentially an excise tax, potentially tying it to the megawatt main plate. There's a bunch of, you know, different ideas that we're.
But I guess I, I, I still worry that right now they have to pay X number of dollars. If the legislature passes something that's like the last bill that got polluted, it would be a state law that they don't even have to pay X number of dollars. They get to pay a lesser amount. Yes, it's not us giving them the tax break. But I, I have concerns that that's where it's going.
So and then there's also the law that passed last year. We went over that one. That is the state's portion that in 2025, if the companies, which we need to have staff do some research to find out and ask which companies are going to be opting into that where they pay, you know, the per megawatt rather than the state portion of the taxes. The county gets forty-five percent of that. The tribes get fifteen percent. The school, the, all the schools in the county get the, the difference. We really need to find out if there's any companies that are interested in doing that. I would guess it would be the ones that are the newest facilities because the older facilities are already depreciated out. Why would they even wanna do that? But we need to get a, an idea of that for our budget next year and then.
Yeah, but I guess I'd say you have, okay, Cypress, let's talk Cypress. Do you think Cypress through conversation is going to let you know which tax method they're choosing? Before they even build and.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about Cypress. I was talking about the, the projects that are already out there that are currently built. Currently built.
You think some of the currently built ones are gonna change their taxation methods?
To, if it's in their best interest, absolutely. So the other big discussion we had on legislation was the community benefits agreements. And whether or not that, you know, trying to include those in there as a requirement that the projects would, would enter into community benefits agreements with either the schools or the local governments. And in, in, in setting, you know, what sideboards need to be set on those.
Well, I would hope that's still going forward because I've been pushing for that for three years as a viable option and what do you know, it's proven to work. So.
In, in, I'm not saying that, that.
Hopefully we don't give.
Projects, you can all, you can already, a county or a city or anybody can go and ask for a community benefits agreement right now. What we're trying to do is put it in legislation and make it clear that one is required.
Right.
That's a good thing.
Okay, I'm, again, anything that has to do with state legislature, I'm cautiously, cautiously optimistic.
But so far, I mean, if this is this last, you know, biennium, all the, everything that the WASC put forward was successful. Right? In that first go around and we're, we're doing this soon enough so that we can have it built up so that we can have a prefiled bill and everything ready to go for the next legislative session. You know, rather than trying to cram it in in November and December. And then there was a lot of discussion about the WASC ledge. So that the, the counties, which we really haven't done setting our timeline so that, that we can come up with our priorities, legislative priorities, some of which affect just the county, some of them affect county residents, whatever, that the county may push forward, that we'd push forward through like Zach. But doing that early enough so that then the stuff that we wanna push forward that falls under WASC's umbrella, that's something that we can bring forward to WASC. And so that means where we would start having discussions about the next legislative session and what we wanna see out of it as, as a board, you know, in April, May and start talking our way through that, which I think would be really good because we haven't, for the most part, ever done that, that I've known in the past. We pay Zach, but we're not taking things to him being like, hey, this is what we need to work on. This is, we need you to start working on, on language, finding the right sponsors. So.
No, that would be good.
The other update, I can, I good, bad update, I guess. The Senate capital budget came out. Senate capital budget did, did not include any dollars for the, the white salmon pool. It also did not include any dollars for the senior facility in White Salmon. The pool, I think it asked for a million, the senior facility, it asked for like three million and they both came up. Dry, the only thing that I found in Senate capital budget with regards to Clickatack County was the Golden Dale Airport for the city to purchase land around the airport. And I didn't even know that one was getting asked. So I will see what the, the House budget comes out, but again, our legislators are not in the majority. So but I did have a good conversation with Senator King. He really thought that the dollars for the assisted living facility was gonna be included.
And I really did too.
And it didn't sadly make it through.
Kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah. That's my, any questions on WASC updates?
No, other than I didn't get time to look through the WASC handout because we didn't get it till this morning. So you're gonna go on up there this week, right? I'll look through it this afternoon, Mark.
Anything new for you, Mr. Christopher? Unfinished business, we can move to that if you're, nothing new?
Had South Orange, Washington workforce development, but it was just budget-related. For the most part, status quo, contract signing. Nothing new and exciting to share.
Okay.
They did have a lot of census data in their report for the different counties that they serve, but I can present you with their annual report that has all that if you so wish or not if you don't wish. Like I said, it's all kind of the same information that's already out there.
Thank you. Ready to move on to unfinished business civil service commission?
Don't know if Mr. Rod Smith has dropped off his application as Mr. Bob said. There is an application going to be filed by someone that has a little more background. in civil service type stuff. So it would again be my recommendation for wait for that application to come, but, or to do what it wants.
Would we like to give him some time and go ahead and move through? I don't think we have miscellaneous reports or comments probably. Do you want to move into the board pending executive session and come back and see if Mr.
We have an executive session today?
A close. Would you like to give him?
Would I like to give him? I would like to give him as much time to fill out an application as possible. If this board is trying to move on filling the appointment today. Move. If you're willing to wait for the law enforcement representatives application uh, and wait another week, I would, I would recommend we do that.
Hold over civil service commission for one more week?
Totally fine with that.
We're good.
One thing that's been brought up multiple times and so miscellaneous stuff is CIPA. Um, and when, and we can and cannot take public comment and the CIPA. And so I'm hoping to, to, to ask my seatmates that you take some time and review uh, RCW thirty-six seventy, thirty-six seventy B um, as well as uh, uh, WAC one ninety-seven eleven. Um, so that we can have a discussion about things that actually can change based on the WACs versus RCWs. And in how our ordinances are written. So I just wanted to put that out there. I spent a good portion of this weekend reading all of that and taking some notes, but if we would like to have that conversation, I know it's been brought up multiple times, so.
I have also read all the RCWs this weekend and I watched all the videos that were provided to us. All the training videos, there's like five of them. Um, and yeah, took some notes with the exact minute um, that they encouraged public comment before decision is made. And I have all those that I can point out and show you the video if you would like.
Do we want to take this to a longer conversation workshop or what are you looking?
Well, that's what I was going to say. I mean, if we make any changes in our code, we're going to have to start doing it through a workshop. So.
Well, I don't know that, I'm not, just for clarification, just so we're clear on what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for any changes to our code. Not asking for any violations of the law. I'm asking for a policy decision. Did CPAs go to public comment before decisions made? Um, which, again, when we have the workshop, I will show all the videos at the exact minute. The person giving the workshop says that you can do that and/or that they highly advise you do that. Um, it wouldn't take a code change because we do it now on some of them. So this would just be a, we do it on all of them. Doesn't take coaching.
Well, I'm looking at it this more holistically. That I think that, that our own internal ordinances can be updated. There is a lot of, I guess, a lot of wiggle room is the best way to put it because as we are partially planning county, much of CIPA directs back to the GMA, which we're not a part of. So a lot of that CIPA that, the CIPA training, and I have a, don't know which, which video you're talking about. Primarily touches on GMA counties usually. And there are significant differences between planning and non-planning. So if you have those references and notes, if you could get those to the staff so that they can share them out to us so that we can review that as well ahead of time, that would go a long ways. And I'm thinking more holistically because I want to, I think it'd be valuable to talk about administrative, the administrative appeals process versus the judicial also versus which we've had over the last few years, issues of when the appeals are going to be heard, if they're going to be heard with the underlying decision or if they're going to be heard by themselves. And I think we can clean up our, our own internal processes. And I'd rather than just doing it one thing at a time, I think we'd be good to hit them all. And it might be a very fun exercise for our new director when he comes on board.
Yeah, if you can share some of the things you have, that'd be great. I'd like to see you.
I will present them on Thursday.
Okay.
Um, more than likely be a screen share so all the public can hear word for word uh, what they said. That way there's no interpretation questions.
Anything else?
Uh, no, other than I am open to uh, looking at the code and seeing what changes are offered. Because I think that can be a very telling uh, process for the public, so. I'd be curious to see what happens here.
Okay. So that will be Thursday then. We'll work on some of that. Mr. Van Cleve.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm requesting a closed session to discuss collective bargaining. I'd like to start with 10 minutes.
Thank you. That means you guys.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, and we're coming back. Are we coming back after?
Do you?
I, I have nothing else after. Dan, do you have anything? Okay. So we'll be going into closed session for 10 minutes and we'll be, do you make an emotion to adjourn?
Uh, when we come back, we, we can just let the public know that when we come back, we will not be adding anything else to the agenda or doing any other business. We will just come back from the closed session to adjourn.
Thank you.